All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Tuesday, June 20, 2023, and ask you if you would all please rise and join the village board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Tenalia?
Here.
Trustee Baldino?
Here.
Trustee Shirley?
Here.
Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
Trustee Labads?
Here.
Trustee Schwingback?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington?
Here.
Trustee Grassi?
Here.
President Hayes?
Here. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have four sets to approve tonight. The first is from the committee of the whole meeting of May 22, 2023. Are there any changes or passes?
Pass.
Passed by trustee Baldino?
I move to approve the committee of the whole minutes for May 22, 2023.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, second by trustee Schwingback. Any further questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, the committee of the whole meeting minutes from our meeting on May 30, 2023. Any changes or passes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by trustee Baldino, seconded by trustee Grassi. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, the village board meeting minutes from our meeting on June 5, 2023. Any changes or passes?
Pass.
Passed by trustee Schwingback?
Move approval.
Second.
Move approval by trustee Tenalia, seconded by trustee Labads. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And finally, the minutes from our committee of the whole meeting of June 12, 2023. Any changes or passes?
I'll pass.
Pass.
Passed by trustee Tenalia?
Nope.
No, Shirley. And who else? Trustee Schwingback? Any other changes or passes?
I move to approve committee of the whole minutes from June 12, 2023.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, seconded by trustee Labads. Any further questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We then move on to the approval of the accounts payable, and I'll call on trustee Bertucci.
I'll move approval of the check warrant register for the check dated 6/15/2023 in the amount of $3,871,510.41.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Tenalia. Any questions or comments from the board, anything from the audience? Melissa?
Melissa Kears speaking. What is the, from Point Blank Enterprises, police vehicle,
Mr. Reklaas?
We have to look that one up and get back to you. I'd be happy to email you with that information.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, roll call?
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Well, next, we move to a very special part of our agenda this evening. Under recognitions and presentations, we have a recognition of a very special young lady in the village of Arlington Heights, Anna Harden. Anna is being recognized here this evening as the Illinois High School Association Class 3A Girls' State Champion in the 1,600-meter run, but also for many, many other achievements that she's achieved in her young life. We all have God-given talents, and like Eric Little, if you saw the movie Chariots of Fire, one of the many talents that God has given Anna is to run and to run fast. And so it's very special when someone is able to use their God-given talents in a way that Anna has been able to do that so far in her young life, but I know she's going to continue to do as she moves on to the United States Air Force Academy for college and to run cross-country and track there, but also in her career as an Air Force officer, and then in whatever capacity she chooses thereafter. But I know she's going to continue to do great things along her journey in this life. Anna started her journey in running in the fourth grade at St. Peter Lutheran here in the village of Arlington Heights. And again, her God-given talents were recognized at that early age, and she started to be recognized there as an individual and as a member of a very good running team at St. Peter Lutheran. And so that's when she began to achieve many different feats and records in the running arena. And so after her time at St. Peter Lutheran, she moved on to Hersey High School, where she, again, led her team in many different records and achievements and in individual honors as well. Most recently, Anna set a, broke a 38-year-old record in the Mid-Suburban League for the 3,200-meter run, a record that was held by Dana Mirabali from Wheeling High School. Dana was a legend there at Wheeling, but Anna surpassed that record by six seconds at the Mid-Suburban League Girls' Track Championship Meet at Prospect High School on Friday, May 5. And so her time of 10 minutes and 27 seconds, again, broke the 38-year-old record for the 3,200-meter run, that's about two miles, by six seconds. And so that was just the start of her very good spring. She went on to then the state meet, where she won the 1,600 meters, essentially the girls' mile down in Eastern Illinois University. And so she is recognized here this evening for her accomplishment there. In addition to her first place in the 1,600 meters, Anna also earned fourth place in the 3,200 meters at the state championships at Eastern Illinois. And so we are very proud to recognize a very special young lady here this evening. Anna, why don't you come forward? I'm all the way up here, if you would. And so, as I said, Anna will be leaving later this week to fly out west to Colorado Springs to enter as a, what do you, you don't call them plebes, what do you call them first year?
Adu-lee.
Adu-lee, at the United States Air Force Academy. And so Anna, the only thing I can tell you is that you're very welcome to beat Army in cross-country and track, but just don't beat them in football. Because besides beat Navy, my next two favorite words are beat Air Force, as an Army West Point grad. And so I know you're going to do great things again at the academy. For people who don't know, entrance in a service academy is very, very selective. And I looked up some of the statistics for the class of 2027 that Anna will be joining, and there was more than 10,000 applicants for her class, and the selection rate was about 11%. I think I'm pretty accurate in that. And so very, very selective, very, very competitive. And so we know that we have a very fine, high achiever standing in front of us here this evening. And so Anna, in recognition, again, of your achievements so far in your young life, but I know, as I said, you're going to do many, many other great things as you move forward in your life, hopefully sometime back here in Arlington Heights, but it may be years from now, but we're hoping to get you back here at some point. So let me read this. Certificate of recognition is presented to Anna Harden. Representing John Hersey High School in Arlington Heights, resident Anna Harden ran 1,600 meters in 4 minutes and 53 seconds to become the IHSA state champion on Saturday, May 20, 2023 at Eastern Illinois University. Anna's state title capped off an amazing senior year and high school career in not only track and cross-country, but in academics as well. In addition to her first-place finish in the 1,600, Anna also finished fourth in the 3,200 to add to her fourth-place finish in the state cross-country meet at Detwiler Park last fall. These athletic achievements, combined with their IHSA All-Academic Honorable Mention recognition and demonstrated strength of character and leadership, led to Anna's acceptance into the U.S. Air Force Academy Class of 2027. This certificate of recognition is therefore presented to Anna Harden in recognition of her high achievement and dedication to excellence, which reflects great credit on her, her family, her school, and her community. And we wish Anna continued success as she runs with endurance the race that is set out before her. Congratulations, Anna. We know you're ready. Now, I know you're going to have to do some public speaking while you're at the Air Force Academy, so I hope you prepared a short speech just to thank your family members, your coaches that are here to support you. I know you had, in addition to your individual success, it always takes a team, and I know you had many, many people helping you achieve what you've achieved so far. So please, Anna, the floor is yours.
Yeah, of course. My parents, thank you for traveling hours for, like, nine years to come to almost all of my races. It means so much to me. And also, my coaches, I couldn't have done it without you. You two are like my biggest fans, and you really, like, I really just couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
Good luck. All right.
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. So I've had the good fortune to know this family for a long, long time. And what she forgot to mention is that she has a brother, Seth, who also was a runner. And as you know better than most of us in this room, this is, this is not just physical talent, it's endurance, and it's really hard work to go those kinds of distances and achieve that kind of success. And I know all along, all she wanted to do was beat her brother. And I know that because my son used to run with her brother Seth, who was an outstanding athlete as well. But her mom and dad are great people, and the whole family's fantastic. So really, really happy to celebrate this here today. When there's so many rotten things that happen in the world, we get to see something wonderful happen for a young person and a great family. So congratulations.
Thanks, trustee Tenalia. Yeah, I couldn't say it any better than that. We are so blessed to have so many wonderful young men and women in our community, and Anna is just representative of that. We've got so many people that are really high achievers, and I can attest to that by the fact that I've been to 60 or so Eagle Scout Courts of Honor here. And it's really a pleasure for me. It's an honor for me to attend those and see what great individuals those both young men and women now are, and to see what great families they come from. And so, again, congratulations, Anna, and mom and dad, and coaches for all of your great work in supporting Anna. And I know you're going to continue to do that in her four years at the academy and in the years thereafter. So good luck. All right, we have no other recognitions and presentations, so we'll move on then to citizens to be heard. And we do have a number of blue cards tonight. The first is from Shannon Silverman. Shannon? Where are you at? There she is. Shannon is the new co-president of the League of Women Voters here in Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect and Buffalo Grove. And she contacted me the other day, and I suggested that she come and introduce herself here at the village board meeting. And so welcome, Shannon, and good luck in your new role.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. I did come bearing gifts, and the lawyer in me wants to ask, can I approach the bench?
Sure, please.
Yeah. So as you, what I handed the clerk, Ms. Hume, is a button that I'm wearing. It was designed, student-designed, by a high school student at Outgrove Village High School. And it is one of our items. She won a sticker brand, sticker design contest in collaboration with her art teacher at the high school. So it's just a little something to kick, to kick off, and you'll see it throughout the year, hopefully. Anyway, good evening. As Mayor Hayes said, my name is Shannon Silverman. I'm a resident of Arlington Heights, and I, along with my co-president, Sarah Wachtwitz, were the new incoming co-presidents of our local League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Buffalo Grove, Outgrove and Wheeling areas, also a little bit of Rolling Meadows. Simply put, we love voting. I loved coming with my son, my toddler sons, to come vote at Village Hall at that time and the different polling places over the years that have happened. I now enjoy turning to my now-college son and hearing his thoughts on who to vote for, and the fact that he can now vote for you all and his, what used to be his school board, and have a say in that. That's why we got involved. We are all about helping the vote be accessible to everyone, regardless of age, race, sexual orientation, gender identity, religious affiliation, or ethnic group. We all see these words a lot at the bottom of job postings and legalese. At our League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, we try to give these words application, meaning, and life. We register voters, hold candidate forums, and report on the different village happenings to our neighbors. Because it's more than just voting and elections. For over 100 years, we have found that the key to making voting accessible is to take care that democracy stays healthy, strong, and full. We believe in the marketplace of ideas made strong by reliable, evidence-based information, as well as life experiences. This is what matters a lot to us, and we continue to try to give it life here in our hometowns. We would really welcome any opportunity to work with the village in the coming year. And check us out at LWVah.org, and check back. We'll be updating things as we go. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shannon. All right, Anna, I'm just going to say you can feel free to go. I know you've only got a few days left in Arlington Heights before you have to put on a uniform, and so please feel free to take your supporters and exit the room at this time. Sure. All right, next, under citizens to be heard, I'm just going to remind you of your three-minute time limit, is Joe Merglin.
Hi, everybody. I'm Joe Merglin. I live at 1401 West Vine. And I'm here again to talk about the squatting issue at 647 North Chicago. I wanted to thank Mr. Reklaas for his response and his email. And I just had a couple of questions. I know you mentioned that NICOR has shut gas off to the property, which is good. Can we get the village?
Mr. Merglin, if you could address your comments up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then I'll ask Mr. Reklaas to answer.
Is there any way we can get ComEd to turn the electricity off as well? I mean, the property is condemned, it's unfit for habitation, but yet the people are living in a tent outside and using the electricity in the house. And also, it's come to my attention this, this evening that there's a conifer in the backyard, and they're using it to defecate, and there's toilet paper there and odor. So, I mean, this isn't a good situation. Really needs to be addressed. And then the other question I had was, you know, once you get the power off, can the village board the building up and just put a lean towards the house like when the grass was cut by the village in the past? I mean, it doesn't seem like it'd be that hard to do. And the other thing I wanted to question is the policing of the area. I know we spoke in the hallway, but when, when the police do an enforcement program on holidays, like on Beverly and Rand Road, they could probably do the same thing with these people. I mean, they have, you know, cracked windshields in their car. It's come to my attention that the woman that has the Buick, the front end now is all smashed, missing a bumper. I mean, you know, this just isn't good for our neighborhood. So I'd like to see some action. We haven't seen anything happen for the last month. It's pretty much all my comments, so.
Okay. Mr. Reklaas, do you want to comment now, or do you want to wait until everyone's spoken?
You know, if, if I could, you know, I could comment broadly about this, and then that may answer some of the other folks' questions.
Okay, why don't you do that?
If that's okay. So I just-
Mr. Merglin, you can have a seat.
Okay.
So I just want to say that the issue at 647 North Chicago has been something that I can say that a group of us at the village have worked on daily since this has been, this issue has come up. We are very engaged in this process and very, very sympathetic to the residents in this area, because this is a very difficult and tricky situation. We do have an individual that is living at the house, that's neither renting nor, nor do they own the property. The property is under foreclosure currently, and we're, we've been in contact with HUD, which has the first mortgage, but there are multiple mortgages. And that process to resolve that before a property is foreclosed does take a bit of time, and I know that's a source of frustration. The village does not have the, the authority to just simply remove the individual from the property, despite those facts. The owner of record, which is in limbo currently, must go through the courts to evict the occupant, which involves Cook County Sheriff's Department and can take sometimes months to complete. NICOR has shut off gas to the property. We've been in contact with NICOR. NICOR will not provide a gas connection to the property without proof of legal occupancy. I have actually spoken to the occupant as well personally and informed them of the problematic nature of this and kind of what we're intending to do. The village has noticed the property is not fit for occupancy. We've actually gone there twice and placed a sticker on the house. And as of yesterday, they have received multiple citations from us for the continued occupation of the house, and those will be subject to fines if they go to administrative adjudication. A tent has come up over the last few days on the site as well. We, we believe that this tent is in violation of our zoning code, and we will be citing the, the occupant for the, the illegal, you know, erecting of this tent and occupation of this tent on the property as well. That's something that's currently in the works. The police department has interacted with the occupant and warned them they cannot park the car, a car on unimproved land on the property. And if they do so again, and this is witnessed by the police department, they will be ticketed. We are also exploring more exotic ways to help resolve this issue. None of them, unfortunately, will provide immediate relief. That's something there is, are restrictions under the law in Illinois, what we can do in this case. But we're exploring every option, literally before this meeting, not even knowing anyone was coming up. Village Attorney Passman and I were talking about this at the meeting, and I can't tell you how many conversations I've had with staff on this today, but also over the past several days. We're hopeful that the citations and fines will discourage the occupant from staying in the property illegally. We also have reached out to Commonwealth Edison to try to get the status there. Sometimes utilities have different standards for allowing someone to occupy a space. We're still trying to get to the bottom of what the status is with ComEd and whether or not they can take the same stance that NICOR has taken in terms of, you know, requiring someone to, you know, produce a lease or a deed or something of that nature prior to turning on their, their services. But that's something that's a work in progress. Our code enforcement officer from the building department has been there multiple times and checks on the property regularly. The information that you provided tonight is helpful, and that's something that I'll be talking to the health department about first thing tomorrow morning as well. And so, I mean, I, we would encourage if anything is happening, you know, with the vehicles, we encourage residents to call 911. Everything is much easier to deal with if a police officer witnesses it. The other thing that, you know, but anything else that, that develops, you know, we've been trying to keep the, the residents informed. I know I had at least one call from a resident on this today. We'll continue to keep you informed of what we're doing, and please let us know if there's any further developments, because we know this is a very, very frustrating situation for, for the neighborhood.
Thanks, Mr. Reklaas. We had one other blue card. Kate Kowalczek?
Hello, good evening. My name is Kate Kowalczek, and I live in the adjacent property. And I have sent an email informing about the tent. We also have some pictures. So they pulled the tent very close to the house, and in order to see what's there, you literally have to go there and become another trespasser to see what's there, or just film from the upper level of my house, which I can see. There, there actually is, there are cans of kerosene open, open cans of kerosene. They have two different fireplaces, what seems to be. They have a white couch wide in the open besides the tent. They do drive into the house on the back with their car, and I have pictures of that. And when they open the trunk, there's a lot of chemicals in. It's hard to tell what they are. They appear to be like bleach bottles and a full trunk. And on Father's Day, they did stay in the tent. They slept overnight. There were, there was one little girl aged about five, six. And in the morning, when we got up, about 7 o'clock, there were two children getting out of the tent, a girl and a boy. So that's the new development that we have right now. And I do want to thank the village for taking all the steps to resolve this issue, as this is not pleasant, and actually, it does not feel very easy. In fact, it really is causing a lot of anxiety. I, I was literally afraid going to sleep on Sunday night, because I see them, I see the fire going on there with the tents, with the child. There were few people. I've heard the woman who seems to be the main character in the trespassing, because they, they moved out of the house. They are not in the house. They're occupying the tent area. There is no notice on the back of the house. The notice is on the front, not to trespass the property. However, she was on the phone talking to somebody that they are doing a camping style now. So thank you for, for taking this very serious, as it is a very serious matter. It's not pleasant at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the board on this item or anything else not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Again, we appreciate you coming to the meeting again tonight, and, and certainly for keeping us informed on new information that might be different than we're aware of. And so, as I told you out in the hall, I'm going to tell you again, we appreciate that, and that's important to us, so that we can stay informed exactly what's happening as of the current situation. And so, as Mr. Reklaas indicated, he and the staff are working on this on a daily basis. And we're doing all we can, believe me. And so we'll continue to do all we can within the bounds of the law. And so unfortunately, we are restricted by the law. And so I, as I told you before, I'm very sympathetic. As you mentioned, we are taking this very seriously, and we're going to try to bring it to a successful resolution as quick as we can. So, trustee Tenalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Really quickly, I know Charles is probably already thinking about this, but for Mr. Reklaas, I do believe there's a zoning ordinance on open fires in, on property and how close they can be to the actual building structure, whether it's a, you know, fire pit or what have you. And so if, if you see something where, maybe, maybe one of the guys can explain what that distance is, and if you see something that's too close to the home, that's a really dangerous situation. So make a note of that and call 911, and the fire department can come out and have a chat.
That's a very good point, trustee Tenalia. And I have been taking detailed notes from your comments, but yeah, that is something that, believe it or not, you know, we get calls all the time from people that have too big of a campfire or inappropriate campfire just in their neighbor's yard that bothers someone. The fire department does respond to those. And, and so that, that if you see that, again, the best way to get someone there is by calling 911. That way, we can get someone there quickly at all hours. And both the police and fire departments are aware of these, this situation. And the chief of police has been keeping his shift commanders informed, and so this is something on everyone's radar.
The pictures, I can follow them.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
From cardboard.
Okay, ma'am. You've got, if you're going to speak, yeah, to come forward. Okay.
Yeah.
Just identify yourself, please.
I just wanted you to know that-
Just give us your name, please.
Roxanne Mayer.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you guys know that the proximity of gas cans, cardboard, two fireplaces, and tons of chemicals around it is incredible. So really, maybe that's one way of making sure that they survive and that we all can help this issue get resolved.
Okay, thanks.
And we have pictures for you guys, too.
All right. Thank you. All right, if no other, trustee Dunnington, go ahead.
Thanks so much. I was just wondering, I know that the village has emergency shelter kind of funds for people that find themselves in a situation where they don't have a place to live. Is that something that would be appropriate for this family?
You know, if we thought it would help, we would offer it. You have to be careful. This individual very much believes that they have a right to be on the property and are in a legal process to try to stay there. And I think this is someone who has engaged in this type of kind of squatting behavior before and does it quite regularly. So I don't know, I don't think this is a, an issue of someone who, you know, just didn't have a place to stay and happened upon- have a place to stay and happened upon this place and is staying there for a few days. I think this was a targeted activity.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Merkley, you're going to have to go up. Go up.
You know, I just had, I just had a thought. You know, hopefully we'll get this resolved, okay, and it'll be done, but we should do something to prevent a recurrence. At least when I was an engineer, whenever you solve a problem, you always come up with a way to prevent a recurrence. Now, I don't know if that's with an ordinance or a law, you know, but we should give some thought to that, or there's going to be other people up here, you know, and it's just a big headache.
Yeah, we're, we're learning through this process as well, and so I know we're, we will all learn a lot about this situation and how we can handle it going forward, so. All right. If nothing else, then, from the audience under Citizens to Be Heard, we'll close that portion of the agenda and move on to old business. And we do have one item to report out this evening, and that's the report from the committee of the whole meeting from earlier this evening. And I think the motion was by trustee Grassi.
Oh, yes. Yes. I move to approve, as I did earlier this evening, to recommend to the liquor commissioner the issuance of a Class C liquor license to SoCal and Leo Incorporated, doing business as Fausto's Italian Kitchen located at 16 South Evergreen Avenue.
Second.
Motion by trustee Grassi, second by trustee Labeds. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Good luck to you. All right, we move on then to the consent agenda. Any members of the board wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Members of the audience wish to remove items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, any members of the board wish to vote no or pass on any items on the consent agenda? If not, an entertaining motion to approve.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second. Approved by trustee Baldino, second by trustee Schwingback. Roll call.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Labeds?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Move on then to new business, and we do have one item to consider tonight. That's the, no, that's under report of the village manager. We have no new business, so we move on then to the report of the village manager. Mr. Reckless, this is regarding the Arlington Gateway request for early review for the property located at 2355 South Arlington Heights Road. Mr. Reckless?
Sure. And just, you know, for a point of reference for the board and for folks at home, the village has what we call the early review process. It was, it's been in effect for twenty-some years, and it allows developers, under certain circumstances, to present projects to the board very early in the process. This is not something that they're submitting for formal approval. It's something that they want, they want to project, present to the board in order to gauge the general acceptability of their concept, and before they make a determination to move forward formally with this concept. And it should be understood that the results of early review don't commit the village to approving or denying a development proposal if and when the proposal moves through the formal entitlement process. It's really just an opportunity for the developer to obtain some preliminary feedback from the board, and I just want to preface that. And then, I don't know, is the applicant or Charles, are you going to kick this off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reckless. I'll just give a quick overview of the South Arlington Heights Road corridor, and then it won't take too much time, and then the development team can talk about their proposal. It's hard to believe that it's been about six years since we first started looking at the South Arlington Heights Road corridor. It was in not great shape, still needs a lot of help and improvement. We started with some key stakeholder meetings, including property owners and including Bradford Allen that owned one piece of the property along that corridor at that time, and they've since acquired multiple other properties. We had surveys and other public hearings that culminated in the adoption of the South Arlington Heights Road corridor plan in May of 2018 that set forth certain development parameters for six or seven key properties along the corridor, as well as some other overarching goals for pedestrian enhancements and other things. And then in July of 2019, an overlay zoning district was created for the southeast corner of Arlington Heights Road and Algonquin Road, and that set forth, you know, some higher densities, taller buildings, which is this property as part of that overlay zone. And then in June of 2020, the village adopted the South Arlington Heights Road Tax Incment Financing District as an economic financing tool to try to spur redevelopment along the corridor. Earlier this year, we started meeting again with Bradford Allen. They partnered with Thomas Rozak and his partners. They put together a series of preliminary concept plans, three smaller models initially. We gave them some feedback, extensive feedback on those concept plans. They took that and have come up with what staff believes is a really good plan, and they've created a larger model that you can see on the table, and they'll walk you through their plan and who their team is. So I'd like to turn it over to Brian Allen from Bradford Allen and Tom Rozak to introduce their team and their project.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Thomas Rozak. I represent Moserian Rozak as developers and Thomas Rozak Architecture as the architect. I'm here with also Brian Carley, who's representing Bradford Allen. We are looking to co-develop and build this project together. So thanks for the time and allowing us to do this early review. So the, the project that we're proposing here, so the project we're proposing is an eight-story, 300-unit multifamily, four-rent residential building. It is on a 3.7 acre site, and it, as Charles said, it's in the overlay district and it's in the corridor plan. And we look to design something that would comply with all the kind of vision that that had in terms of, you know, beautification, redevelopment, walkability, and placemaking. And we've gotten to a point where I think, you know, it starts to look like something. The Arlington Heights, I think, needs more quality housing, and we are trying to do that here, complying with the use, the height, the bulk, setbacks, unit density, and parking This is the overall site. This is actually the site plan showing all four phases. We're here to kind of give you a preview of the first phase, but this just gives you context of all four phases. So you have Algonquin Road and Arlington Heights Road, Algonquin on the top and Arlington Heights Road on the left. The top, okay, so right there is, oh, thank you whoever's doing that. That's the Phase One site. That's 300 apartments, 24,000 square feet of retail, and all the residential and retail parking that's required, which is 480 parking spaces for the residential and 81 parking spaces for the retail. And the other sites, Phase Two, which is at the bottom of the sheet there, is the old Daily Herald building, and Bradford, Bradford Allen is redeveloping that into a medical office. So they're utilizing the existing building and adaptive reuse renovation. And that would include the renovation and rebuild of the parking garage as well. So that's Phase Two on the bottom. Bradford Allen has control of that land as well. Phases Three and Four are contemplated to be similar to Phase One. So we've kind of put in kind of a placeholder for another 300 units in Phase Three and another 300 units in Phase Four, possibly a hotel in Phase Four. The idea is to kind of invigorate this area, not only with the residential, but it's a mixed-use project, so it would have retail as well, heavily landscaped, walkable, bike-friendly, all that. Here's just for your reference, the map shows you Arlington Heights Road on the left and Algonquin Road on the top, and it's demarcated in red. So that's the site with the existing buildings that are empty and pretty dilapidated. And there's, the Guitar Center is just south of that, which would be Phase Three. Phase Four would be the office condo building. That would be the Phase Four building. And then obviously, the Daily Herald building would be Phase Two at the bottom. And then these are views A, B, and C, and D are the views at the street. So we would propose to do residential units, 300 residential units, and we would provide studios, ones, twos, and three bedrooms to meet the market demands. We would design 550 square foot studios, all the way up to 1,300 square foot, three bedrooms, with an average size of about 844 square feet. We would have 25,000 square feet of retail. We contemplate something like, you know, coffee shops, pizza parlor, maybe other kind of service-oriented retail uses. We're also talking to the Guitar Center possibly about moving them from their existing building into the Phase One. That has not worked out yet, but we're, we're working hard on that. Affordable housing, we have proposed to do 10% of the total units onsite, so 10% of 300 would be 30 units, and they would be in compliance with the Affordable Housing, Arlington Heights Affordable Housing Program, and they would be at the 60% AMI. Amenities, this would be a highly amenitized building, 24,000 square feet of amenities, including pools, spa, sun deck, workout areas, yoga studios, golf simulator, work-from-home conference rooms, a dog walk, dog spa, trellises, chef's kitchen, and then indoor and outdoor dining facilities, everything that's in these Class A apartment buildings. So here's the site, Phase One only, and shows you the site plan, and I apologize if this is all not coming out the right color, but again, Algonquin Road on the top and Arlington Heights Road on the, on the left. We have Tunney on the far right, and then our new access road on the bottom there. And I apologize, it's hard to see, but there are, is this a pointer, too?
It is, but I can do it with the mouse as well if you.
Yeah, so Retail A is at the top corner there, so that's about 10,000 square foot of retail with accessory parking all around, yeah, coming in off of both Algonquin Road and Arlington Heights Road. We have Retail B, which would be right there, about 9,000 square feet. And then Retail C, which is over there by Tunney and Algonquin, it's about 6,000 square feet, so a total of about 25,000 square feet. So we worked hard with, with Charles and his group to get this to kind of be workable and desirable for retailers, that would attract retailers. In the middle there, that orange color, I don't know if it looks orange to you, but that's the lobby kind of amenity area. And there's a drop-off in the center where that one arrow is going into, towards the west there, and that's a drop-off entrance. So it's kind of a connecting access road between the access road on the south there and then Algonquin Road. And then we have parking for the residential units, including guest parking, and landscaped throughout, nice kind of perennial and annual flower beds. We have a dog run, very nicely kind of appointed landscaping. And then on the fourth floor, we have amenities and a pool deck and a sun deck, and then more residential units. And then on the fifth through eighth floors, we have all residential units. We probably have, we'll have over 60 different unique floor plans, and we do that on purpose to really kind of capture the market and allow a lot of different people to satisfy their spatial needs, but also the pricing needs, because, you know, every hundred square feet is, you know, another $300 of additional rent. So we want to meet people's, you know, budgets, but also meet their spatial, spatial requirements. One thing I want to point out, I'm going to go back here, there's a line there for setbacks along Algonquin Road and Arlington Heights Road, and there's a 50-foot setback. So we comply with that on the whole building. And so, there's no, there's no, the upper part of the building after the third floor, we're setback 50 feet, which is in, in compliance with the requirement. And then we are 20 feet back on the first three floors, so we worked that out. The market, we think it's, by the time we deliver this to the market, will be about $3 a square foot. And then the affordable units will be at the prescribed rent index that AMI has for 60% AMI. We think that there's enough market demand, and we have a market study to prove that, to absorb all of these units, and it'll take about 12 to 18 months to lease them up and stabilize the building. This will be a sustainable building. We're going to seek enterprise green community certification. We're going to do things like energy-efficient, you know, windows and enclosure, power reductions, both on interior and exterior lighting, high-efficiency plumbing, heating and cooling, done with heat pumps, electrical charging stations, parking areas will have stormwater detention planted throughout, beautiful landscaping throughout the site. And then on the roof, we're going to have a green roof and then a solar array to harness the sun. Here's, I apologize, it's hard to see, but these are some samples of floor plans. So this is a studio on your left, 556 square feet, typical one-bedroom, 760 square feet. And again, each one of these types, studio, will probably have four or five different studios to really have a lot of variety for the market. You know, this market here in Arlington Heights and Northwest suburbs is very sophisticated, and there, and there's certain things you have to do to be successful, and we're really trying to do all those things in this, in this project. You'll see large walk-in closets, you know, in-unit washer-dryers, all that stuff that's state-of-the-art in these units. Here, here's a two-bedroom, 1,075 square feet. And again, everything just gets a little bit bigger as the units get larger, but every unit has a dining room, a work area, obviously living area and sleeping areas. We have, you know, really nice kitchens and so forth. Three-bedroom, 1275 square feet, example of that, too. Not all the units, about 75% of the units will have balconies, because that's kind of what the market, you know, wants. The design, we, we wanted to create something that's very desirable for the marketplace. You know, these buildings are very straightforward, they're efficient, they're well-lit, enjoyable, they're modern. They become a catalyst for this area. I mean, if you drive by this area right now, you can see kind of what the status is, but it's going to rejuvenate this area, make it safe, and it's going to create a community. And, you know, it's going to, it's kind of the perfect mixed-use kind of project. It's got everything that a mixed-use talks about, residential, retail. It's got all the appropriate parking, it's got walkability, great landscaping, all that We, we are doing the, the project is eight stories high, but if you can see, we have these kind of steps and undulating facades to kind of create interest and appropriate residential scale so that, you know, the observer has a very positive kind of view of the building. Here's some elevations from all the different views, and here's a detail of what the elevations will look like. And.
Mr. Merkley, if you take this if you're.
The folks watching at home won't hear you without a mic. They won't hear you.
So this is the, the materials that we're contemplating. We have the, the white. So this is the materials that we're contemplating, we have the white, this is a cement fiber board panel. So we have white, light gray, medium gray, and dark gray. And then we have this variegated brick that we would have on all, the entire first floor, and then parts of the second and third floors. And then all the mullions and balcony are all painted this black color. Then there's an accent on these chevrons, which you see over here, and over here, and over here. The chevrons are accented with these green mullions to give it a nice accent. So this is, these are the materials that we're contemplating, and they're all high-performance materials. Do you like this back?
We'll leave it there.
So this is a section, and you can see the residential units, that's supposed to be blue, I don't know if that shows up as blue, but the residential up on top, sitting on top of a podium parking garage with retail and then amenities on the lower levels. There's a pool on the fourth floor, including more amenities, and the green roof and the solar array up on the, on the top. The building is eighty-eight feet tall, which is under the kind of height that's contemplated by the overlay district. So well under that, and also our density is well under that. Landscaping, we propose to not only, you know, have shade trees, ornamental trees, but we have all these little pockets of perennial and annual flower beds. We're going to have beautiful paving materials as accents in the parking areas, lighting, wayfinding, these obelisk sculptures that I'll talk about in a second, and bench furnishings throughout. Obviously, in terms of transportation, we know what a great location this is, right off I-90, and accessible. It's very pedestrian, it will be very pedestrian-friendly, I don't think it's very pedestrian-friendly right now, but we will add bike paths, all our paths, sidewalks will double as bike paths. We have four levels of parking, total of four hundred eighty cars, eighty-one spaces for retail, and which all meet or exceed the village requirements. So this is a view looking southwest, so to your right is Algonquin Road, and to your left is Tunney. So this is kind of, kind of one of the main feature views, and you see on the first floor, it says bistro, that contemplates having retail there, and then the residential units above. And we designed this so that you never see the parking, the parking is always hidden either by retail or residential. And if it's not hidden, it's actually fenestrated in the same way as all the other parts of the building, so it all has the same look, a very congruent look. But again, here you see kind of how the building steps and undulates, and we have this kind of very handsome kind of use of just simple colors, simple textures, and, but still give it a lot of kind of architectural delight. One of the things in the center there is this obelisk, and this is just one idea, we haven't developed it too much yet, but the idea is that it's a focal point, and the overlay district talks about creating these focal points, so this is our early version of what we would do, and we have some other ones to show you later on in the, in the deck. But again, you can see, you know, we've set the building back, there's a lot of walking space on the sidewalks, wide sidewalks. There's, we've ghosted all these trees on purpose so that you can see the building, but there's going to be a lot of trees, a lot of landscaping, it's going to be very lush and very beautiful, and it's going to be very different than what it is today. Here's a view with Arlington Heights Road to the right, and Algonquin to the left, so this is looking southeast. Right on the corner, through the trees, you can read music shop, so we're hoping that could be possibly where the Guitar Center would go. If not, it would be a fine place for another user, like a restaurant or something like that. And again, you can see the building rise up above that, up to eight stories, so the building is basically anywhere from one to three to eight stories. And that's on purpose, we do this kind of stepping to make the massing look very agreeable. This is looking northeast, and Arlington Heights Road is on your left. Our new access road is kind of there in the middle, on the right side, and then to your far right is where the Guitar Center is. So here we kind of wrote in these possible users, like a cafe, a florist, a pizza shop, and again, the music shop. And again, you see this building kind of, you know, very, you know, the massing is on purpose, done in such a way that you don't see any of the parking, and we are complying with the parking requirement. Zoning, we will be seeking a plan development with the village. We've done many plan developments, we did the two largest plan developments in Evanston and Mesa, Arizona, so we're very fluent in the process and ready and willing to work with the village on this, and we're very excited about this. And again, the phasing, this is just Phase One of four phases that we hope to do. Here's a bird's-eye view, looking northwest, and you kind of see a little bit more context here. And on the fourth floor there, you see the pool and the sun deck, and you can see the green roof and the solar array. On the far right, you can see the bistro, that retail area, and then that obelisk in the, in the flower bed, and that kind of, that, you know, that kind of rhythm and setup is throughout the whole site. Here again, now looking northeast with the Arlington Heights Road on the left, again, you got to get a sense of what the building looks like, and all the different uses. And then this is looking southeast, and you see, way far back, you see the Daily Herald building and then I-90. So it gives you a little context of what we're trying to accomplish. So again, you know, Bradford Allen and our firm, Mosier and Rozek, we're partnering on this project. Bradford Allen is a Chicago-based developer with over four billion dollars in assets under management. We are a design-develop firm, and our expertise is really multifamily, this is what we do, we love doing it. It's, you know, it's a noble craft to create housing, and I've been doing this for thirty-four years. I'm an architect and a developer, and actually, everybody in our, in our firm is an architect, so we're like architects that develop. We've done a lot of projects in Chicago, we've done a lot of projects in Evanston, so this is really kind of what we do. And again, we'll be the architect, Clark Construction will be the general contractor, we've done five projects with them, this will be our sixth, so they're a good partner, we like working with them. It's going to take about sixteen to eighteen months to complete a building like this. Leasing will be done by Lincoln Properties, this will be our fifth project with Lincoln, we love working with them, and they'll manage and lease the building for us. It'll take about twelve to eighteen months to lease up and stabilize a building like this. And then we have a great team, besides everybody I just mentioned, we have, you know, the top people in the industry on, you know, Integra doing the market study to make sure that we know that we are providing the right product at the right price. And KLOA will do our traffic study, V3 will do our surveying and civil engineering, Thornton Thomasetti will be the structural engineer, and then S.B. Friedman Development Advisors, we've worked with them before in Evanston, and they'll be helping us on all things TIF. These are some, just some other views of, these are just not rendered, but just right out of Revit, they're kind of fun to look at. And then here's some obelisk ideas that we had, so A, option A is shown in both daylight and dusk. That's the one we've shown in the, in the project right now, but we've, we've kind of looked at other ideas, and so this is just the beginning of that. And we want to make sure, you know, the village likes what we do with this, and this becomes, you know, a marker, a focal point. It's a piece of sculpture, it's a wayfinding element, it's signage, it's lighting, it's going to be all those things, we hope. So that's it, I'll open it up to questions, I know that was a lot, and I apologize for the quality of the presentation, it didn't come out the way it was printed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rozek, and your whole team at Bradford Allen for your commitment to redeveloping this very critical gateway to our community on the south end. I know we've been looking at this property for a long time. Charles will remember back in the early nineties when we started looking at this property with respect to the Star Line. And I was on that committee that was sticking post-its in different areas down there, this would go here and that would go there, and somewhat similar to what you're envisioning here, I think, and what we were looking at back thirty-some years ago. So, very happy to see it come to fruition at this point, all these years later. So, I just had a few questions and comments, and then I'll turn it over to the board. Again, this is our opportunity for early review, doesn't obligate us to vote yea or nay down the road, but happy to have the opportunity to provide some early input. So, one que, the first question I had was on price points for your apartment, I know they're luxury apartments, but what is the price range?
So if you have a five hundred square foot studio, figure it'll be around fifteen hundred dollars a month in terms of rent. And then if, imagine a two-bedroom that's, you know, seven hundred square feet, you're about twenty-one hundred dollars a month. And then say the largest thirteen hundred square foot unit will be just under four thousand dollars a month. So that kind of meets, you know, the top of the market, you know, pricing for, for the suburbs, and for this quality with amenities, you know, parking, all that, all that stuff. So it's, that's the package we offer.
Okay. On some of the renderings at least, it looked very close to Arlington Heights Road and Algonquin Road, in terms of the sidewalk and the pedestrian walkway along there. In others, it didn't look that bad, but I know there was at least one rendering where it seemed right on top of the roads. Here it looks okay, but I just want to make sure we have enough green space from very heavily, very densely trafficked Arlington Heights Road and Algonquin Road to provide for safety for people who might be walking along those sidewalks there, so I don't have...
I totally agree, and...
There's industry standards that govern that, I'm sure there probably are.
Well, the requirement by the village is to have a fifty-foot setback for the taller portion of the building, and a twenty-foot setback for the, up to three floors. And then we have a setback off the curb to the sidewalk, and we have eight-foot wide sidewalks, so everything is, is, you know, quite large. And here too, you can see the setbacks, this, this bird's-eye view, I think, gives you a little bit better perspective than the other ones, which are like, you know, you're walking on the sidewalk or you're driving a car across the street. So I think this shows you the setbacks, and you can kind of imagine that fifty-foot line that's, that's parallel to Algonquin Road. And we purposely kind of set that and kind of, you know, moved the building back as it went easterly.
Yeah, this looks fine in terms of the building setbacks, I'm a little more concerned about the sidewalk setbacks, and there's enough green space between the road and the sidewalk where people might be walking, so.
Mayor, if I could add, one of the requirements of the South Arlington Heights Road corridor is to move away from the carriage walk. So in this area, you've got a carriage walk literally at the curb, five-foot walkway, and then right in this area, there's probably a two-foot strip with a little bit of landscaping, and then the parking starts. So the requirement is eight to ten feet of parkway, and then the sidewalk, and then another setback from that sidewalk, and they're proposing an eight-foot sidewalk. And it's around eight, eight foot, about eight foot setback from the curb, so they are meeting that, and we'll make sure, you know, as we get the detailed plans, that, you know, that's still part of the plan.
Okay, thanks, Charles. And the only other question I had was with respect to the parking, and you're dealing with a blank slate here in terms of your planning, so you should be able to plan for all the parking that is necessary, so I'm just a little concerned when I see that you're only going to have twelve spaces for guest parking for three hundred units. So why do you think twelve is a good figure?
You know, we understand, you know, like how planners come up with the numbers of per unit and stuff, so, you know, we're complying with that, that number. So we have four hundred and eighty parking spaces for three hundred units. We believe that they won't be rented, all, all of them, so we'll have a surplus anyway. So that twelve is just kind of a guesstimate of how many we would need. With technology, you can actually control access, and so if we needed more or less, we can kind of control that with, you know, passes and different ways of allowing people to get into the building and provide more guest parking if we needed to.
And the only other question I had was with respect to the potential use of the commercial spaces by restaurants. And you do anticipate at least some of the commercial space will be taken up by restaurants, I would hope.
Yeah, we hope to, we've had preliminary talks with our retail brokers, they love the location, they like the sizing and the setbacks and everything. You know, retail's going through kind of a metamorphosis right now, but we think that if we have the population of this, of this building, and, you know, it's kind of becoming, it'll be creating a place, you know, and I think, and what I've always found, I've been doing this for thirty-four years, is that the retail comes a little bit later. You rent up the whole building, and then a year or so later, you get kind of, you've proven, you know, your, your, your kind of hypotheses, and, you know, people have moved in, but the retail comes a little bit later. And I think if we create this amount of density, and, you know, density is good for retail, and then, you know, the subsequent phases, I think, if people know what we're trying to do, I think the retailers will react very positively. The second phase, or excuse me, the third phase where the Guitar Center is, you know, we're, we would like to put in a, maybe a grocery store there, like a, you know, small grocery store, Aldi or a Trader Joe or something like that. So we want to get the right type of retailers, and we're going to work very hard to do that.
Okay. What my concern is, because you are, you just said that you anticipate that there will be restaurant uses, and you would encourage restaurant uses, and so would I. There's a statement in there that says, "A parking variation would likely be necessary should restaurant tenants occupy any of the commercial spaces." So I'm concerned that we're kind of building in a requirement to grant a variation before the project even begins, so that's my concern.
We'll work with the village however you guys want it, in terms of that. I mean, we are complying with retail, the retail requirements right now. If the restaurant requirements are higher, then we'll look at that.
Charles, any comment on that?
Yeah, that's a great observation, and we would be looking for that to be analyzed as part of the traffic and parking study. So we'd like assumptions on X amount of square feet of potential, you know, type of restaurant space, and that will be plugged into that analysis so we can understand the hourly, you know, peaks, because they have different hourly peaks than the residential, and whether there's a shared parking model concept that can work here, or whether they need to look at, you know, some additional parking, that's what that study will show. We don't have that study yet, so that'll be part of what they have to submit when they start moving through the process.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'll turn it over to the board then, Trustee Shirley.
Thanks, and I'll just direct these out, Charles and Randy, you guys can direct them as you, as you see fit. So we know that office space supply dramatically exceeds demand right now, right? It's just, there's way too much office space, we're not considering that for a location like this, it's just, the market has flipped, and, and there's no sense to it, right? It's all about residential.
The only, it would be medical office is the only exception to that, there still is a demand for that, but, Charles, if you want to...
I was just going to say, you know, general office, that's absolutely correct, there's, you know, lots of kind of see-through office buildings right now, so it doesn't make sense to even try to consider anything like that. In fact, on this site is a vacant office building already. Medical office, there is a demand for new state-of-the-art medical office, you know, that all depends on location and pricing, and, you know, the... You know, that all depends on location and pricing, and, you know, the right tenant coming on along at the right time. And that's what Bradford Allen's trying to market the old Daily Herald as, a kind of state-of-the-art, you know, renovated, repurposed medical office building. If that fails, then a fallback would be that phase also looking at residential sometime down the road.
And the reason I ask is just because when I look at that corner and I think about uniformity, and I think about residential units with balconies, and that always brings in this unknown, like what are people going to put on their balconies? What do they decorate with? What do they hang their laundry out there? You know, that kind of thing. And so one of the benefits of an office commercial building is that there's uniformity, and there's not that kind of, you know, potential for it to look crummy. Just, just two cents, my observation. Are we, I see so many of these that seemingly going up around here, Mount Prospect, I see some in Wheeling. I mean, are we at risk in the time it takes to build this of now entering a market where there's a saturation of apartment and residential spaces?
Again, we would require a market study when they submit to evaluate and look at that. And their equity investors and lenders will also be looking at that very, very closely, because I don't know what the price tag on this building is, but it's probably, you know, 30-plus million, I would guess, somewhere in that range.
It's more than that, yeah.
So, you know, their investors are going to be looking at that, you know, probably even closer than we are.
Okay, thanks. So does the business plan for the retail spaces that are on this property, did you guys look at it like they need to be enough customers in the units themselves to support that? Or do you look at how much you think will come from outside the actual development itself and how much will be internal to the development? I'm just curious how you gauge that.
Yeah, that's a great question. We think we're going to have some kind of service providers. We'll have, you know, a coffee shop that could, you know, benefit from obviously the, you know, the population onsite, but then have the correct signage so people from around the neighborhood could use it as well. You know, like a dry cleaner, those types of service users are always, you know, fair game. But I think with the corner, you know, say the corner where the music shop or the bistro, we're contemplating that. With that visibility on the street, I think we can get outside, you know, restaurants and other different users to occupy that. But it's, you know, the retail is probably 10% of the whole kind of enterprise.
Okay. And so I just want, when you started talking about, you know, a grocery store in Phase Three, I'm thinking more like a destination off of I-90, like a Ruth's Chris or something like that. Maybe not at Phase Three, but maybe in this development as well.
That's absolutely right.
Something that would be a destination for people that are coming from outside Arlington Heights as well as people that are within Arlington Heights. And maybe that's a bad example of Ruth's Chris, but, you know, you've got convention traffic at Rosemont that can very easily get out this way. Now, they've got plenty of restaurants there, but if you had something unique, you know, it might be a draw in that regard as well. So I'm old-fashioned, and I really like brick buildings. And so I'm not going to dwell on this a long time, but, you know, these kind of new materials and things just, you know, it's kind of hinky to me, but I get it. I get it that I'm not the right person to be designing these things, and that's the reason I'm sitting here, I guess. But, you know, the more brick, the better to me. It just, it seems to stand the test of time, and it just speaks quality to me. So maybe we can have more bricks than our competitors in Wheeling and Mount Prospect. I don't know. Maybe that's a goal we could, we could put out there. And then, so we have, we have requirements though for a certain amount of masonry, Charles? Because it seems to, in the descriptions here, where he's talking about like meeting certain requirements with regards to the facade treatments. I mean, explain to me what we, what we do there, what we require.
We have general design guidelines for the community, but they're not specific on a percentage or a requirement for any type of material. But they will have, we have high standards. We, you know, and we have, you know, got those guidelines that, you know, again, working with the Design Commission, where not every community has a Design Commission. And, you know, they do, you know, vet this, and they'll be looking at it really closely. You know, in our downtown, for the most part, you know, the buildings have been predominantly big, probably, you know, 80 or more percent brick. And that's more traditional architecture, the way that our downtown has developed. In some of the other areas like Hickory Kensington, the Four North Hickory Building that's under construction, you have very limited brick. It's more some of the newer materials that you just referenced. And, you know, each area, we like to have its own character a little bit, so we're not duplicating our downtown. It has a little different look and feel. So, and this is a big site, so it has the ability to have a different feel and a different look.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any plans for some kind of grand entranceway into Arlington Heights at this location? Have we ever touched base with that? I mean, I just want to make sure whatever we do here and in Phase Three, you know, is kind of in keeping with that, so it doesn't preclude something that we might have had in mind?
Yeah, so we have a small gateway sign just south of this phase right now. That was part of a larger project, you know, to have those gateway signs, you know, every entrance. In the corridor plan, it does call for a larger, more significant entry feature right as you exit the Tarway Ramp or heading north on Arlington Heights Road. So just south of the Guitar Center. We've got a few concepts on that. And that would be, you know, probably something we'd look to try to implement when that phase, I think it's Phase Three they're calling it, when that were to develop.
Okay, all right, thanks. You know what? I like it. I don't want you to get me wrong. But I just think we need to make sure that it fits right, because it will be at the entranceway to the village. And there's a lot of good things happening here, and we want this to kind of be, you know, something that puts an exclamation point on that. So I support what you guys are doing, and it looks really nice to me. So thanks.
Trustee Tenalia.
Thanks, Mayor. So Charles, what's, what's the underlying zoning going to be for this, would you say? This will be a PUD?
It's a PUD. It's part of the South Arlington Heights Road Overlay Zoning District. The actual underlying zoning is split. On the west side is B3, which is our kind of automotive-type use zoning district, not really appropriate. And on the east side, east of Tony Road, is M1 Manufacturing. So we'll probably be looking to, you know, rezone to a better category. I'm not sure what that is at this point. But that's why the Overlay Zoning District was set in place to kind of control that a lot as far as the uses, the density, the heights, and the required setbacks on the B3, for example. There's no setbacks required. You know, in the overlay district, we require the setbacks that we just referenced.
So what are you thinking, though, units per acre are going to be an appropriate zoning? I don't know if it was mentioned how many acres this first phase is. Do we know what that is? I'm sorry?
3.65.
3.65 acres, and so in B3, what, if that's what it's gonna--
Well, the Overlay Zoning District sets forth a density--
Oh, it does, okay.
So that was already changed, and it is based on square footage by unit. So it's, I can't, I don't know the unit mix, so I can't tell you how many, you know, units per acre. But it's comparable to our downtown B5 zoning district, maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit denser. Although this building is under that maximum requirement.
Okay. Well, so where I was going with this is, this is a really good place, in my opinion, to consider maxing it out. Bring as much here as you can. I would not be a person on this board that would say that's too much, unless it was ridiculously tall, underparked, you know, poorly designed, poorly put together. If you put together something that's wonderful and you put together something that's dense, I think that's fine in here. But what, so I was kind of just trying to figure out what's the right number. They're proposing 300 units. And sometimes with developers, there's a trade-off, right? With what, how many units can I get in there? And what are the amenities that I can achieve? How much money can we spend on the brick and the design of the project? Unit counts are big, important numbers for these guys. And I would say that there's no magic to that 300 unless it is something that you're after as only 300. I think if it works, it works. There's nothing stopping, you know, it from being something better, bigger. However, I am, as the mayor pointed out, a little bit concerned with the parking. And every project that I've ever reviewed or been a part of, everything is driven by the parking. You have several layers of parking on the first couple of floors here. Did I hear you write, and maybe I misunderstood, 300 units, number of parking stalls was 481?
480.
480?
For the residential, 81 for the retail.
So it's 480 and then another 81? So 560-ish?
Yes.
Altogether? So 480, what's the math on that? 480 divided by 300? What's our, what's our per-unit parking ratio going to be proposed at here?
1.6.
1.6? Okay. And is that a number that staff is supporting at this point for something like this here? That's not a transit-oriented development? But what are you, what are we thinking?
So we're seeing developments around 1.2 to 1.4, you know, units, you know, spaces per unit. But a lot depends on how many two- or three-bedroom units they have versus one in studios. We did change the parking code in the overlay district to match up the requirement by unit. So it's one space for a studio and one bedroom. I'm sorry, one space for a studio, one and a half spaces for a one-bedroom, and then two spaces for a two-bedroom or more, which is different than our code elsewhere. So--
So that's where your numbers come from, and it actually meets that?
Yeah, it's exactly the ratio.
All right, great, great.
So, you know, so far, the first blush is, it looks good. Again, it has to be proven up with the traffic parking study.
Right. As the mayor pointed out, I'm a little concerned. So that part that you, you got me on where I'm at with the residential and the parking and density and all that. So let's move on to the retail and commercial. The mayor's very, very accurate and correct when he talks about concerns with numbers of parking stalls for retail spaces, whether it is straight-up retail for like a guitar store versus a bistro versus a Ruth's Chris or something like that, or medical. The numbers just keep increasing and increasing, and 81 stalls for how many square feet? Did you say 24, 25,000 square feet of retail?
Yes.
I would be a little concerned that that's a little light based on what those uses might be. We want to see all those things you said. I, I shouldn't have said we. I would love to see all those things that you said incorporated in here. But the two things that I know for a fact that are going to be a challenge are numbers and then proximity. How you place those stalls on the site versus where those high-traffic entrances are for those retail spaces, right? Whether it's the bistro on the east end or the music store on this end. Unless you're going to be talking about having lots of valet parking, if you go to the other, one of the other renderings here, there's no parking really close to, like, look at this, this music store on the corner here. One, two, three sides of it, there's really no parking there. We've got it on the other sides, and then on the far-left side, if the bistro's down there, same, same issue. How do we end up being careful to not have retail spaces that we can't rent? Because no one has the right adjacent parking on it. So this is all preliminary, and these are just thoughts. I'm not suggesting you have any answer for any of this. I'm not asking you a question. It's rhetorical. But, but I like it. I like what you're doing, and I think, you know, the pedestrian scale of that stuff all works really nice. Let's just make sure that it works functionally as well. So overall, when this is done, we're talking about 900 units in three phases.
Theoretically, yes.
All right. And if everything were to go right in a perfect world, how far away is that when the third, fourth phase--
Well, I mean, if we could say, imagine starting construction next spring on this first phase, and it takes about, you know, a year and a half to build it, and another, you know, 12 months to lease it up. Each phase is almost three years, almost, you know? So if you, if there's an overlap of start and stop, you know, it's, we're talking six to eight years probably. You know, and that's if everything goes perfectly.
All right, okay. And then on the projects that you've done before, are the other projects similar in this kind of grand scale? I mean, this is heroic. This is a big, big, big project when you locate it that way. The Evanston projects or anything else this big?
Yeah, we did the two largest planned developments in Evanston back in a while ago. We've been concentrating now on the city of Chicago. And we've done very tall, very dense buildings. We just finished a 375-unit building in Fulton Market on Elizabeth and Randolph. Randolph is the main kind of, kind of thoroughfare there. It's very kind of popular area. We also had 20% affordable there. That's a, you know, $150 million project. So we, this is what we do. This is, we're really good at multifamily, and we're very comfortable with it. We understand all the systems. We understand the marketing, the branding, the design, how to interface with a village, all that good stuff that, you know, takes it from, you know, A to Z, which is very, very, very complicated.
And do you guys maintain ownership of these buildings, all of these buildings, or do you end up releasing them at some point?
So this one, you know, Bradford Allen's going to hold it. It's a long-term holder. In the past, we were merchant builders. We would build it, stabilize it, and sell it.
So is that, what about Evanston? What were those?
In Evanston, a lot of them were also condominiums, so those were for sale. So it was a different market.
Yeah, no doubt. And that was going to be my next question. Is this building going to be suitable? And at any time, do you imagine this being a condo flip?
I don't think so. I mean, based on what we know today, I mean, you know, condos are deconverting because apartments are more lucrative. Will that change ever in the future? Who knows?
You know it's going to. I mean, we all know that at some point, people are going to get tired of spending $2,500 to $4,000 a month in rent, and they're going to start buying some units when things stabilize. When is that? Is that three years from now? Is it five years from now? Who knows? But at some point, all those flips that happened, you know, in the early, earlier, what years were those, '05s and so on? My thought would be that a lot of these apartment buildings will flip out to be condos. But you're not interested in that. That's not something that you're even thinking about in this case.
It's very difficult to do condominiums. So, but to Trustee Shirley's point, you know, in terms of housing, I think we have a housing crisis locally, you know, in the Chicagoland area and nationally. So I think whether they're apartments or they're condos, it's still a good thing. I think, you know, if we can go through a process like this and build 300 units, it's a good thing. And any viable site that, you know, can provide housing, it's a good thing, so.
All right, I'm just going to make sure I've got my questions asked here. I did have one more, I'm pretty sure. Tiff, have we, Charles, Randy, have we had any dialogue with what the Tiff ask will be the proximate amount on this project? Or is that something that has not been discussed?
We've had some previous discussions a year or so ago with Bradford Allen on a, you know, different concept. This is a whole new plan. We've not had an ask or discussions yet other than, you know, it's there and it's in a Tiff district. And, you know, if they make a request, we'll evaluate it as we do all other requests and look at what their, you know, internal rate of return is and what their, you know, extraordinary costs are and what the Tiff-eligible costs are, things of that nature. The other thing we are in the midst of is a second-phase sewer study. There is a sewer capacity issue in this area. So the first-phase study identified some alternatives to increase sewer size going east into Mount Prospect and connecting with the MWRD system. And the consultant is now kind of evaluating that further. And, you know, there'll be some costs associated with that, not just for this project, but for others in this area.
Sure. And how much, how many years are left on this Tiff? Do we know?
So the Tiff was created in 2020, so there's 20 more years. So the Tiff was created in 2020, so there's twenty more years left.
Twenty more years. All right, well, in general, I think it's a great project. I'm really happy you're here proposing this. I think there's a lot of positive pieces to this puzzle. You guys have put on a great presentation here tonight. Everything you talked about was really great. I hope that you can work all this out and make it happen. My initial comments about, you know, not being shy about density and so on, I stand with that, you know? Make this what it needs to be, so long as you can meet the other criteria, and don't make it unusable, right? The architecture of it is interesting. Not a big fan of horizontal siding for a building like this, but I'm also not a big fan of aluminum panels. They're all around in other towns, and I'm not a big fan of those. The traditional architecture that I enjoy quite a bit is probably not necessary for this, right? I think you're making a good divergence away from that, and that's okay. So I'm embracing this, and I'm looking forward to seeing you guys come back again with more refined details and good points on all of it.
Thank you.
Trustee Grassi.
Thank you. Mr. Rozak and team, I want to thank you for wanting to partner with Arlington Heights on this project. I'm familiar with the Fulton Market Building, so I'm, I was just down there not that long ago, so I'm familiar with that, and I did stop to look, so I appreciated that. And I did want to just mention, we definitely are in a housing crisis from what I've seen, just from people I talked to in the village and in my day job also. Just the other day, I was having coffee downtown, and a business person, businessman I know in the area just hired somebody who, he said, could not find a place to live in Arlington Heights and was having to go all the way to Highland Park to find a place. So just, I just heard about that just this week alone. So I do believe there is a need for more housing. I did want to just comment on a few things. First, I really appreciated your comment that it is a noble craft to create housing, and I agree with that. And what I really appreciated from what you've shown us, I wanted to speak to a few things that are important to me, but I really appreciate. It seems that you're creating more than just a living space. You're really looking at creating a home and a place that people feel like home. And I really appreciate all the little pieces that you don't have to do that are a part of this. First, what's very important to me is inclusionary housing. And I also appreciate the way that you have really looked to meet, really looks like most of all the village codes and requirements from the get-go. And I do appreciate that kind of partnership in knowing what we are wanting and asking, and trying to meet that at many of the different points. So I thank you for that. So the inclusionary housing piece, I'm grateful for that. I like the sustainable pieces, a lot of the green roofs, the plants, the solar, the energy-efficient windows. That is very important, especially as we're going forward with new places to live, so thank you for that. But the little touches, like the butterfly garden, the sculpture, public art piece, just those, the dog-walking area, the bike paths, all those pieces that really can make it a usable place for not only the people who are living there, but people who want to come visit and come to the restaurants or stores or whatever may be there. So those are the pieces that are important to me also, and I'm grateful that you have included that. And as of now, I'm in support of what I'm seeing, so thank you.
Trustee Lebeda.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. And I also want to thank you for all the work that you and your associates have put into coming to this point. Thank you for working so closely with staff. And Charles, thanks to staff, you and staff for working so hard, because I know this is not something that you do overnight. So I really appreciate all the hard work. And I am, I would also say from the get-go that I am generally supportive of the project. I tend to also be a traditionalist in terms of the way something looks with more of the brick and so forth. But I'm less wedded to that in some places that are the outskirts of town as I feel about in the downtown where it dates to, you know, the eighteen-sixties and so on. So I actually think it's a pretty nice-looking building. I like the fact that you, regardless of the number of parking spaces, I do like the fact that a lot of the parking is underneath, and you're not, you don't see a sea of asphalt for parking spaces. You know, expecting all the residents to be parking in a surface lot like that. And you did mention that the possibility of controlling the, I guess, the interior parking, should there need to be more parking for the restaurant or other uses? Is that how I understand it?
Yeah, if that need is there, you know, there's some sharing, and we could look at what the different retail users are. If there's a restaurant that goes on until ten o'clock at night, and some of the other retailers are closed, I think there's some sharing available. And also, within our building, we don't want to offer that up from the beginning, but we can reserve, you know, say, forty more spaces inside the building if we need to, and make a little partition, again, with technology, you know, revolving doors, all that kind of stuff. So all that is possible. And I think in terms of planning, you know, this is what planners are looking for, is shared parking. They call it underparking, you know, because people are theoretically using, you know, transportation. This is not a TOD, so we understand this. We know, that's why we proposed the number you wanted. Because, you know, in other places, we would say, well, we should really look at a lower number. We're not seeing that here.
Okay. Yeah, I have a son who is a planner, and transportation planner specifically, and he's always railing about how there's, things are overparked, there's too much, and there needs to be more shared and so forth. So even when it's not transit-oriented development like this, like this, so I can appreciate that. I hear it at home. So I do, you know, I agree that, and I have also read a lot about the crisis in housing, and, but it did also kind of concern me when I know just down the road in Elk Grove Village, they're proposing where the shopping mall is and the old bowling alley and so on for more development with residential and so on. But, you know, so I would be looking forward to seeing the market study at the point that that becomes appropriate, to make sure that we do have sufficient, you know, desire for it in these locations, and especially at these price points. I do really appreciate that you are including the affordable housing without any questions or trying to negotiate anything. And it is comforting to me to hear that you, in Chicago, develop buildings with twenty percent affordable housing. So, and I know their requirements are higher. So I really appreciate that part of it. Given that you anticipate some three-bedrooms, it makes me think that the possibility that there might be children living in the building. Do you have any plans for a play area for kids?
Yeah, that's a great question. So if you look in the bigger picture, we have a lot of little pocket parks. You can't really read it here because it's hard to see, but there's a dog park and a little play yard right across the street from Phase Four. So there would be that as we went into the further phases. And yeah, three bedrooms always means there may be a possibility of that. And we would, you know, welcome that. But, you know, in our experience, it's very little. Three hundred units may have, you know, five kids in the building, that's it. But we would still make it very friendly, dog-friendly, kid-friendly, all that stuff, and make it walkable and fun and, you know, active.
Okay, all right, thank you. You also talked about being bike-friendly. Will there be some connection at some point from this location to Bussy Woods, for example? Because that's certainly a place where many people want to go and ride their bikes.
It's a great question. We were asked about that, and we're ready and willing to explore that. We don't know how to do that, but we'll work with you, you know?
So a direct connection to Bussy Woods South is a challenge. You've got, you know, the on-off ramps at I-90 there. It would be very treacherous, you know, to try to create a bike path going south on Arlington Heights Road. Can you get a grant or something to go over the tollway or something like that? Perhaps, you know, that's very expensive and would be a long-term planning prospect. We are in discussions on how to connect to our bike system. So going north on Tony Road, and then Tony Road connecting to Gobert Road. Gobert Road is part of the bike plan for both on-street and a separated bike lane. And then that ultimately will connect to Gulf Road. Gulf Road's supposed to be a regional west-east bike connection. You know, not much has been built, if anything, along that segment. But if you go right a little bit, and then on Meyer Drive, you can then get to White Oak and, you know, go around that way. I know that's very circuitous, but we've talked about, can you get something under the tollway? You could probably get a path there, but is it safe? And how do you, you know, stop the traffic that, for example, you know, is flying on South Arlington Heights Road under the pass to, you know, get on the ramp and go eastbound? Same reverse movement on the east side of Arlington Heights Road. So we'll have to have more of those conversations. But the intent definitely is to connect to our bike system. So, you know, people could bike to our downtown or other areas in the community.
Okay, well, that's great, too. And because it was definitely a concern of mine to be at that particular location. People in, who are driving are not expecting to see a bicycle crossing Arlington Heights Road or crossing Algonquin. So it's good to know there's another option of people wanting to ride their bikes through other parts of town. I just have two other questions. One is, I'm not familiar with the Enterprise Green community that was mentioned in here. What is that?
So it's a new, sustainable kind of metric. We've used LEED, and we've used Green Globes. And this is another one that we're looking at, pursuing. They work in tandem with Energy Star. So it's just another different metric system that you can use for, you know, calculating, you know, how much, you know, energy you use, how well-insulated the buildings are, carbon, all that good stuff. So that's it. We're looking to explore this system on this project.
Oh, okay, okay, that sounds good. And the last question, I was just curious, does the Oblisk have a particular significance to somebody? I mean, it's an interesting feature. I know there was some discussion about it, and I realize you can do other things besides, you know, including lighting, different colors of lighting and so forth and so on. But I was just curious if it meant something or if it was just an idea.
It's an idea. It's a European thing you see in European cities, you know, kind of center of city. And when we saw the, so some of the requirements from the overlay district, we thought this would be kind of a cool way to solve that and make something fun, make it artful and useful. So again, this is like, I would say, half-baked, but we're going to work on it and make it really good.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Well, thank you, and yes, I am generally supportive. Thank you.
Trustee Bertucci.
I'm not going to reiterate some of the things that we've already heard, but just to say that I agree with everything that was said to my left here. And I do like the project. I do have a couple, one comment and then one question focused on one aspect. The comment I have is, again, also happy about the affordable housing piece, but we all know that there's also a demand for luxury housing. And that is a, being the gateway, we do want, you know, a little bit of a shining building on the hill, so to speak. I think that feature will be great. The question I have, and you might not be able to answer it, but it would be in conjunction with you and staff, and that is pedestrian crossing now and/or in the future. You know, as we think north of there, there's Mitsua. And then we also, you know, Johnny's Beef, which came out of Elmwood Park, my home, you know, my town from the old neighborhood, Walgreens, you know, is right there. There's a great breakfast place there called Golden Brunch, right there on Gulf Road and the Jewel. So there's going to be some movement that way, but you also have movement back to your building of the people that are up that way. So what's the plan for making Algonquin Road more pedestrian-friendly as far as crossing and being able to, you know, have that movement back and forth?
That's a good question, Trustee Bertucci. The corridor plan does talk about enhanced crosswalks at the key intersections, Algonquin and Arlington Heights Road. And then it also designates the potential for a mid-block potential signal and crossing kind of where the old Wellington used to be, that's kind of mid-block. We're also studying the different sites that could redevelop, so we can get the same concept of moving the sidewalk off the curb, creating the parkway. There'll be some properties that don't redevelop, so we'll have to weave back in. So we're looking at how that could work, going from kind of south to north. And this would be kind of the start, the impetus to get that going. And then, you know, depending on available funds, looking at trying to do some decorative crossings in the pavement, you know, subject to IDOT approval, and they're very strict on what they will allow. On the Uptown Corridor, we've just retained a consultant to do that same study and analysis at Arlington Heights Road and Palatine Road and Rand Road and Arlington Heights Road. So as they're having conversations with IDOT on what IDOT will allow and developing a spec and a concept, then we can start to apply it in this location as well. But that will take time with IDOT. Based on our past experience, that takes, can take a long time to get approvals.
Sure. But what I'm glad to hear is, we've heard here that this project could take three, six, eight, ten years or whatever to be fully completed, as long as we're also focusing on that. Because I think the pedestrian walking or biking, like has been mentioned, will be helpful not only to the community you're building, but also the surrounding communities that are either there now or that will be built going forward, and making that area a little bit more, you know, less treacherous from the standpoint of trying to cross Algonquin Road or Uptown Corridor. Arlington Heights Road would be great, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
And we do have some, we do have some, you know, employment drivers there, OSHA. You know, they bring in people from out of town, and, you know, they're always looking for restaurants. There's really not a lot of restaurants in this area. We've got several hotels, Doubletree and others, that, you know, have customers that are also looking to walk and go to a restaurant or something like that, and there really isn't much there. So I think, you know, there is a potential for restaurants here, and it's really important to have that pedestrian, you know, connection as well, and making it feel comfortable to be able to walk, you know, which right now, you know, it doesn't feel very nice when you're next to cars flying by.
All right, thanks, Charles.
Trustee Schwimmbach.
Thank you, Mayor. I too agree with a lot of the comments to the left, because there is nobody to the right that I can agree with. Mr. Rozak, just a couple of questions. Bradford Allen owns all of that property now? The Daily Herald Building, everything?
The Daily Herald Building, which is Phase Two, and then the Phase One lots, which is, I believe, four lots. They don't own the Guitar Center or the office condo site yet.
Okay. So I know the Daily Herald Building is Phase Two. I thought, though, Randy, and I don't know what the timeframe was, but we approved some signage for that Daily Herald Building quite a while ago, where they could put up kind of a sign to get people to call to rent that space. Wasn't that, yeah, six, eight months ago we did that here on this board?
That's correct.
Yes, you did. Thank you for that, by the way. It looks great. I was taking pictures today as we drove by on the Jane Adams.
Well, I guess my question...
Give us your name again, please. I'm sorry, Brian Carley from Bradford Allen.
Brian, I guess my question was, because you put the sign up, and you're trying to entice people to maybe move into that building as you redevelop it, but that potentially isn't going to be done for maybe two and a half years.
No, I mean, so, well, I think Phase Two, you're misconstruing. These can be happening concurrently. I mean, there's nothing, the work that Tom's going to be doing with the multifamily can... multifamily can happen simultaneously with us leasing this building for medical use.
Okay. Because I got the impression...
We're calling it Phase Two just to differentiate the different activities on the site, and so we can kind of understand what's happening in the different areas.
So, you might be redeveloping that, that building, which you call Phase Two, at the same time you're putting...
Yeah, it's, it has to do with interest. So, you said about six months ago, they got the sign. It took a couple of months to get it up. And so, now we're working, cleaning up the inside, and we're doing a vignette to kind of show what the interiors would look like with, you know, a medical space built out. And they were doing a little exam room and a little reception area, so we can give people an idea of what's possible in the space.
And have you had any...
Well, I mean, it's, it's almost done. We're not done with the interiors yet. They're basically just mock-ups.
Any excitement of people wanting to move in right away?
Our company also does brokerage, and so, office brokerage and medical office brokerage. And there has been a lot of interest, but we want to wait till things look good before we actually get people on site. So, hopefully, by midsummer, maybe end of summer, we're going to start doing tours in earnest and seeing where the market's at. And depending on interest, hopefully, we get going pretty soon. And you'll be seeing more of us as we talk to you about the plans there.
Okay. Thank you. You know, and, and it was nice to hear Trustee Tenalia when he was talking about the architecture, because I'm, I'm not an architect, but when it's built or I see a, a concept, I personally, I know if I like it. We've got a lot of buildings in our downtown area that are very attractive. I, I drive through a lot of our neighboring communities. It seems like they put up buildings really quick. They're, they're, they're square and boxy, and this does look attractive to me when I, when I see your schematics. So, I appreciate that. Because as, as we do drive through some of the neighboring communities, they, they put up these buildings quickly. They all look the same. There's, there's no character. So, I do like that. I guess one of my concerns, and I, and I've mentioned this to staff before, staff spends a lot of time reviewing projects like this. We spend a lot of time reviewing projects. We've got some projects in our village that, that are actually moving forward, and we've got others that we've been talking about for four to eight years, and they don't go anywhere. So, I'm, I'm excited that, that you've brought this to Arlington Heights. I guess my concern is, you know, this is just a preliminary review. Now, you've got to go through some formal review, but I'm, I'm hoping you want to get the shovel in the ground and start building some things so that that property's not sitting in that state for, for any, any more time than it has to. Because it's, it's, for me, it's been a little aggravating where we approve something, it doesn't get built, we reapprove it, it's still not moving forward. So, when I see projects like this and they, they look nice, I, I want to get them moving. So, I'm, I'm hoping you guys do as well, and that your financing is, is all in place. And, you know, once you get this through staff, you're ready to go.
Yeah, believing...
What are your thoughts there?
I, I understand what you're saying. And we want to start as fast as possible, you know. And we understand the, the process. We have to go through the different commissions and stuff, and we're ready to do all that. We were very happy that we were able to come and give you an early review. So, we're super excited. And, you know, Bradford Allen is our partner. They are, they have, you know, a, a company that can do a project like this. So, they're, they're providing the backing. We have the expertise in terms of all the other steps that have to happen. So, we're good partners. And unless there's some sort of, you know, economic catastrophe that would, you know, cause all construction to stop, I would say that, you know, we're going to get this thing done quickly.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Trustee Baldino.
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of early review, let me quote Trustee Tenalia and just say I like it. Specifically, you know, I like the inclusion of affordable housing. I like the, the green roofs and the solar panels and the commitment to sustainable development. And I will say that I look forward to seeing the, the detailed plans that talk more about what you're actually going to be doing there. I do share the concerns about parking with potential restaurant use. So, I'll be looking very closely at the, at the traffic studies and the parking studies that, that will come with the formal planning. And I do share, you know, concerns about this actually moving forward. And so, it's great to hear that there's a commitment there to, to get this moving forward. And every question that I could have possibly asked has been asked already. And so, rather than just rehashing these things, let me just say at this point that I'm supportive of this moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Trustee Dunnington.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Just to be brief, too, I just want to say that, as you mentioned, currently, this is not a walkable or bikeable area. So, I think it's really exciting that this is going to be the start of a change in that area that Trustee Bertucci mentioned will carry on north into town. And I, I like the design. I like the green roofs, the sculptures, and that we're following, they're following the affordable housing ordinance. So, I think it looks like a great plan, and I'm excited to see it back. Thank you.
Anything further from the board? Trustee Lebedz.
Sorry, everybody. I forgot to ask, were you planning to charge for parking spaces?
Yeah, it's, it's an additional charge for, for a space.
Okay. All right. Thank, yeah. Something you said made me think, hmm, maybe you're going to charge. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything further from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Anything further from staff?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Hopefully, you've got some good input. And again, we thank you for your commitment to Arlington Heights, and look forward to working with you through the process as it goes forward.
We appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks to the whole team back there, too. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. All right. There is no other, well, is there anything else from the village manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Under petitions and communications, let me just say and acknowledge and thank those involved with the kickoff of Sounds of Summer, including our assistant village manager, Diana McCullough, and our communications director, Avis Mead, and Public Works, and Police, and all those who had something to do with Sounds of Summer. It was a great kickoff despite the cool weather. I think, Diana, we had a record crowd perhaps last Friday night?
We sure did.
And so, yeah...
Streets were full and the parking was full.
Yeah. So, thank you for all your hard work and leadership on that. And I know there's a number of people involved, but you and Avis did outstanding job to kick it off. And we've got, hopefully, we'll have good weather the rest of the summer as we go forward. So, thanks to all those. And this is our last meeting before the Fourth of July. So, we hope to see everybody at the Fourth of July Parade and all the Frontier Days activities. I know Frontier Day is still looking for volunteers. So, if you have some free time over the five days over the Fourth of July holiday, please contact the team at Frontier Days Inc. on their website. I'm sure they're happy to, to take additional volunteers even at this late, late time. Anything else from the board? Trustee Baldino.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly mention that this weekend, I attended the City of Supports graduation celebration. And just very quickly, these are, these are kids with mental or physical challenges that they are in training and therapy to overcome. And it was inspiring for me to be there, to see these young kids moving on and overcoming their challenges. I was very grateful to be invited and grateful to have the opportunity, opportunity to attend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Trustee Baldino. Anything further from the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
By Trustee Lebedz, second by Trustee Schringbeck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for joining us this evening.